Did you hear?
Yes. The only thing I messed up was I forgot to start the recording. So this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, August 31st, and I already went through all the formality, so I apologize for the clip in the recording.
I did, I did file earlier today. I sent Cindy a copy of the management agreement for the Cove. And just as an update, if you've, anyone that's been by, they've seen that the, the actual blacktopping has been done. The Health Department did come by today. They are clear to open. So there will be, again, everything's been put on hold because of what's happening with the pandemic. But now that they have everything in place from the Health Department, they'll be opening soon.
So who's going to be the manager of the facility?
It'll be, well, the Brass Rail, the manager of the Brass Rail is Jen Nolasco.
And so there's been some kind of agreement put in place between the owners of that facility and Ms. Nolasco, where Ms. Nolasco's gonna rent and manage the, now it's called the Brass Rail again?
Brass Rail. The, I sent a copy of the management agreement to Cindy. I'm in the process of preparing the paperwork for the ABCC for the actual transfer. So that, Cindy?
Sent you, the staff should be there.
Frank, can we have a person who's involved with three different restaurants and manages it other, to be the same manager for this one?
Well, Norris is currently closed because of the situation.
Right, but it's still a licensed active location?
Correct. Once we actually put in the application, we'll have a physical manager. And I, I'd hope to have that within, within a week. One of the complications, and it's just an accident. I explained that we needed a certificate of good standing, but the, I had certificate of standing I received was from the Secretary of State. They're trying to get it from the DOR and the DUA. The complication is, it's difficult dealing with anybody in, in Boston right now, but the LTM Lake LLC has never actually opened up, so they don't have a DUA account. So we're trying to talk to someone at the DUA to get the certificate from them, so I can file everything. One of the requirements, of course, is that certificate.
Okay.
They've never had any employees.
Is that, is that LTM Lake LLC? Was that the one that we approved last December, Frank?
Correct.
Okay, so that's still gonna remain, it's gonna still remain the holder of the liquor license. It's just gonna have a management agreement with, with, with Jen under the Brass Rail LLC?
Correct. Although we are applying to transfer the license to the Brass Rail LLC.
Okay.
So they'll actually hold the license eventually.
The Brass Rail LLC will hold the liquor license?
Correct, assuming the ABCC and the town approve the transfer.
Is that the same thing where John Biscaldi holds the, holds all of the collateral on the Brass, the Louis B's liquor licenses? Is it the same thing?
It'll be similar. Jen is giving a pledge of the license and the, and a pledge of the, of the corporate assets.
And who is the attorney of record representing LTM Lake LLC?
I spoke to Anthony's partner this morning. I believe his name is Paul Manzon.
Paul Mantenoni.
Paul Mantenoni will be representing them.
All right. So have you talked to that counsel?
No, I just got his name today. I'm, I'm preparing the paperwork and then I'm gonna get it over to him.
Okay. All right, because all, all of that information will have to be reviewed by the supervising liquor license agent, Lieutenant Landis.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they asked me to prepare the paperwork since I've, I've done it quite a bit, so.
Yep.
Joe, Russ, questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
So when the dust settles, they, do we still have to approve the layout for that license? Are they going off the old layout from back in the day?
The, everything, everything will be pretty much the same. Any changes have to be put into the application. But basically, it's exchanged, it's a transfer of an existing license, so it's usually very, very similar.
So Frank, and Jen, Jen, you're gonna run it as a banquet facility?
Uh, yeah, just banquet and special events.
Right, and that'll obviously, that, if you gotta deal with a COVID-19 type formula, you'll have the space in that building to do it.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
So are they coming back in front of us for a hearing for that license, or no, they won't need to?
Yes, we will be.
Eventually.
Under the management agreement, it will run it under LTM Lake LLC, but we're coming back in front of the board for a hearing for the official transfer.
Yeah, Mr. Didi, Mr. Didi, these are only informal discussions to have them inform us what they're working on right now. They have to go through the legal process with all the ABCC filing.
Yep, understood. Place looks great with the, just with the blacktop finish, so huge difference.
Yeah, yeah.
How long is, how long has the Cove been closed?
That I'm not sure, because it was closed when, when Patty passed away. For a while, there was, there was a woman named Tina, I don't remember her last name, was running it. So whenever she stopped running it, the, the current owners purchased it through the estate, through Patty's estate. And since that time, they've been doing all, all the repairs, both inside and out. Spent quite a bit of money on, on the building.
Okay, so it's not a, you don't foresee it to be a big ramp to get the place to be operational once all this legal dust settles?
No, it should, it, at this point, they've done it, all the work inside that was required by the, by the town of Southwick in order to open. Now I just have to do all the paperwork to transfer the license to the, to the new entity.
Right. And the, the last time, the, and this may go afield of the discussion, because this is more about the liquor license, but does anyone know how this works out with the lack of sprinklers in that building? Because that was a, a thing for the last owner.
As long as she, if she keeps it as a banquet facility such as the Cove was, is not required to have sprinklers. That's why it's operated for all these years without sprinklers. The problem is, the, the woman who took it over for a while, she was running it like a nightclub. That clearly needs sprinklers if it's a nightclub. But this is gonna be, go back to a banquet facility. So, so there is no need for the sprinklers under the statute.
Gotcha.
Let's fire, we'll look into that.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I got it. I just was wondering, because I don't think they did that as far as part of the improvements that they were doing over there.
No.
Sometimes fire department will ask for the fire, fire to be on duty during the, during the function.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Cindy.
Sometimes the fire department will require a fire personnel to be on duty.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yep. Yeah, we've done that before.
Yep.
Okay. Joe, you have anything else? Joe?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
All right, well, thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll, I'll sign out, so you lose all this noise, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a payables warrant, number 2106, dated 8/24, and the amount of $413,034.67. Does anyone have the amounts for the payroll warrant, or we're skipping that?
It wasn't completed as of the end of the day today.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Next meeting.
Yep, I need a motion for the open session minutes of August 18th, session one.
Joe, Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe, Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And open session minutes number two for August 18th, 2020.
Joe, Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe, Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And lastly, the executive session minutes of August 18th, 2020.
Joe, Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe, Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay, into our business items. First is a memorandum of understanding with John Goddard related to the Greens East subdivision, third-party inspectional services. I believe we have a copy of that. I know I just saw it a minute ago.
And... And that basically is a follow-up on your action a few weeks ago, where you authorized him under a Chapter 268A ethics ruling to be able to do that. And that is, of course, at the request of the planning board, that he be the, the third-party monitor of the work. And the funds have been deposited with the town as of today to comply with the requirements of the planning board.
Great.
We need a motion for the chair to sign.
Joe, Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe, Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Approved conservation restriction for Greens East subdivision on College Highway, tabled.
Right, because that, that, they did submit it to us, but a, Egline had a few things he wanted to have looked into and adjusted. Dennis is working those out with both Al Slesler and the, their attorney. And then when they make those adjustments, that Mark will review and approve to form again. It'll go through the Conservation Commission for their initial approval, and then make its way to you, or your board.
Okay. Following up our meeting of last week, or I think it was last week or two weeks ago, with Southwick Hill Road, the portion that is part of the new condo development, we're going to suggest that we change the name, and we are going to schedule a public hearing on the same, correct, Carl?
That is correct. The hearing notices are being prepared, and the butter notifications are being prepared by Attorney Coyle.
But what we need to do is, we need to actually put forth what we are proposing to be the name of the road.
Which has been based upon the consensus document that the chief gave you last, at your last meeting.
Correct.
And I think, what did he say? That nine out of 14 were in favor, or something like that? So it seemed to be an overwhelming number of people on the streets, so that's, certainly can be listed in the hearing notice as a, as a proposed name change. But obviously, you, the chief wants to make sure before those notices go out, that your board is, is okay with that. And I think you would be, if that's what the neighborhood wanted.
Well, I wanted to put it in front of the board in case there was any last-minute suggestions. But what was the name of the road put forth by the, by the police chief that was, came out of those meetings?
Iron Horse Hill.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Did anybody have any other suggestions for that road, or is that road name acceptable to everyone here?
I was hoping it would be the Russ Fox Memorial Highway, but, I mean, I'll stay with what we have, if you want. I just, you know, I know Russ has been dying to get something named after him lately, and ever since the dog incident, I've been trying to cheer him up, so.
Well, Joe, it's gotta be, it's gotta be something that's a few miles long.
Yeah, for the run. Maybe, maybe the new development going by the rail, so we can get Russ something on that. So, yeah, I guess we're fine with Russ.
I would like to thank the vice chairman for his consideration, but I think Iron Horse Hill is, is fine with me.
Carl, let's proceed before this gets ugly.
Okay. Not a problem.
I don't help a brother.
And I just figured out that Dennis Hackett is probably hopeful.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, they, they work with each other.
Yeah.
In the know, they all work with the same companies eventually.
Okay, redeployment of surplus fire and police vehicles.
Yeah, that is something that the lieutenant had approached me about, and obviously, there's some vehicles that the, you're going to be, as a result of the new fire truck acquisitions, you're going to be selling one of the old Humper engines, you've already voted on that. And back in July, you held off on the rescue truck, because there's discussion about repurposing that vehicle as a joint police and fire dive, rescue, and recovery unit, instead of them having two separate vehicles. And that would remain in the fire station bay. And then this would allow the old 1985 Chevy truck that the police had been using, that was a hand-me-down from the fire department before, that would allow us to sell that. And then there's some other, there's some other vehicles.
Yeah. I just make sure, because I feel like someone told me nowhere.
Okay, this, so there's some other vehicles that have to be, as a result of that, the, the police got approval to acquire three vehicles. And I know at one point, there was gonna be a grant, and we were gonna try to get something for the K-9 unit, a bigger unit, but it looks like that grant through that other organization is not gonna materialize, so the police are going to be acquiring a K-9 unit out of the three vehicles. So that will allow possibly the old K-9 unit to come to us as a pool car. And then there's an old marked car, an old unmarked car that the lieutenant wants to become another admin car for the training of officers. And I believe he had also approached Joe, because Joe was in the parking lot one day. So that is the issue of some of these different vehicles being redeployed, and some of them, the net of them coming to us to be sold. In fact, I just sold the Mercedes last week. That was on an earlier vote.
Sold it?
Yep.
Nice.
Yep, I'm bored in a scrapyard.
Excellent. So with your, so are you looking for a motion for all of that in one, or are we gonna talk about that as, as far as how we're gonna do it? Because the, the dive truck makes sense, right? That, that maneuver makes sense, to take the rescue truck, make it the dive truck, surplus the old dive truck.
Right, you talked about that back in July.
Right, we were all on board. I believe we were all on board for that.
Right.
Nodding of heads? Okay. But the, the rest of it, I think, the K-9, I thought the K-9 thing was almost a done deal. I'm surprised that didn't materialize. So that's gonna be impactful for what they're gonna do. Now, if they're gonna go take some of the money we just gave them for the Cruisers this year, because those are the new Explorers, so they had to re-outfit those cars with all the new stuff, because all the old stuff didn't fit anyway.
Right, and they can, they can still do, they can still include that within the acquisition of the three.
Okay, and then the old K-9 car, we would surplus? We don't need that as a town?
Well, we do, we, we need to, we need to replace that 2005 green Ford 500, or 2006, so. And this car's a 2017 or 15, so.
And no miles, right?
It's newer, it's in 64,000 miles, and I'm told the, the backseat, they'll just put it back together for us. So we are gonna have to get rid of that old green car. And, you know, in lieu of us approaching the green energy things from this direction, we're, we're still doing those types of hand-me-downs.
Okay.
So if you want, we don't need to make a decision tonight. You can certainly, if any one of you have your own questions on this, you can satisfy yourself by having a conversation with the lieutenant.
What was the last piece again, as far as another unmarked car?
Right, they were looking at taking one of the old Cruisers, one of their older Cruisers, and make that an unmarked car because of the, the lieutenant hasn't been able to use his vehicle that much, because it's been off with other people off of trainings.
What they're finding is there's more training, as you know, and usually a Cruiser leaves. And they don't want the Cruiser sleeping, but then any split second, we need more cars than we have. So they, the thought process was, one of those were in decent shape to do training, and or let the kid run back and forth with the kids. And I was like, yeah, as long as it doesn't cost us any more money for that car, eventually, is where I left it. I understood what they were trying to accomplish. They just don't have enough vehicles.
Gotcha.
Well, the other, the other thing you need to also consider is with this new legislation on Beacon Hill about the police officer training and things of that nature, I can only envision there being more training requirements for police officers.
Yeah, it's gonna get worse before it gets better.
Okay.
So it is something that the lieutenant was, you know, going over with myself, and I think he had talked to Joe, but if any one of you want to follow up with him, that's fine. But these are just surplus cars.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the lieutenant and the fire chief and police chief.
Um, I'll second that motion, but I still think it comes back to, what do we have left, and how we want them to go where they go, or get scrapped, or whatever. But, yeah, I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe, Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
We have to mark that Crown Vic, though, because I don't want Russ ever driving the dog car.
It's not a Crown Vic, it's a dog.
I didn't want to say that. I didn't want it to get itchy. I didn't want it twitching. Just, we really need to mark that car for future years, just in case it's gotta go somewhere.
My, my understanding, Mr. Didi, is that car's about 64,000 miles on it, and they still think it's in decent shape, and it's, it's actually a Ford Taurus.
Yes.
Oh, perfect, they don't know the difference.
All the Vics are gone.
Russell will know when that car's coming down the street, what it is.
And that Taurus is even newer than 64,000 miles, because it was practically rebuilt right before the current dog officer took over.
Right. Yeah, so that, that's why, at the end of the day, we, we needed to make sure we got a good pool vehicle, so.
Yeah.
Do those cars get a lot of use, Carl?
The pool ones? We've been using them to deliver meals on wheels. Clerk of the Works had to use one today. I mean, yeah, they, they go out every day. They go to the post office, the assessor's office, the site visits. You know, once in a while, the Concom uses them for, you know, conferences and things like that, so they do go out.
Gotcha. Okay. Planning board requests to be on a subcommittee related to short-term rentals, local legislation. So there's a letter here dated August 25th from Alan Slesler, our planner, and they're putting together a subcommittee to decide if the board should allow short-term rentals, so like Airbnb, Verbo, Bed &amp; Breakfast, et cetera, as they are not allowed in town at this time. Board is reaching out to other departments for their professional help. We're reaching out to you for guidance in your particular specialty. If you or a representative would be interested, please inform the planning board over the next couple of weeks. Would anyone from the Board of Selectmen like to be on said subcommittee?
I'll make a motion for Doug Moglen.
I will second that motion.
As the chair, I can disregard your motions.
Do you think one of us needs to be on it? What do you think?
I don't know, I don't.
I, I don't, I mean, the planning board's where it's at, we know that. And the rate we're going with Zoom, there's always someone on that man board meeting, whether it's you or Mr. Moglen, he seems to always be there. I don't know. What's your thoughts, Russ?
I, I think it'd probably be good if we had some input. I've always had people contact me that actually do have rentals that they do.
Oh.
And they're very interested. Yeah, they, they weren't aware it wasn't legal in, in the town of Southwick, and they're very interested where we're gonna go with this.
You know, and it's funny, right? If they're renting it and doing it the right way, and the neighbors aren't upset, we'd never know they have one.
And that, that was their point to me, that they're, they work with their neighbors, they are longtime Southwick residents, remodeled a beautiful facility, they limit the number of people that can be there and the length of time, and they've notified all their neighbors if there's ever an issue. They got, the neighbors have their telephone number.
Never had a problem.
And it's a beautiful, beautiful house, and they've been doing it for years.
Every single zoning bylaw is a violation of the new good neighbor policy, in my experience, especially anyone that's gone in in the last 15 years, right? It's always been, somebody, you know, made a mess of things, so then a zoning bylaw comes about for one reason or other, even the customary home occupation, right? We tried to make it the best we could with, as a good neighbor policy, but it was, it all came about because people were behaving badly. So, you know, unfortunately, it's, you know, you get a lot of great people doing great things, and that, you know, they work with their neighbors, and they recognize their neighbors and are nice to them, and then you get, you know, a, a couple folks that mess it up. It's, it's almost like the same thing with, well, with just about anything else. So, all right, I'll sit in on it. I don't, there's no need to take a vote. I'll sit in on it, and we'll see where it goes from there. Fair enough?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, planning board, oh, request from the WIC for an additional 9/6/2020 thing, and there was a flurry of emails this afternoon, which I have not honestly read. That came in late, late in the day, correct, Carl?
I guess, we're just, apparently, there was an event that was supposed to take place in Maine with, with a race up there. It's not going to take place, so the racing organization approached other motocrosses, and ours has, the American Legion was okay with it, and there doesn't seem to be anything going on around that time period. So they're, they're petitioning to amend their schedule for you to allow that to happen.
So I guess I need a motion to allow this event on September 6th.
Uh, I will make the motion, Russ Fox.
Joe, do you wanna second it, or do you wanna?
I'll abstain, because once in a while, we do work down there, and I would hate for someone to think I'm actually making a living somewhere.
Well, I rarely work at the motocross, so I'll second the motion. It's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Joe, Didi abstains.
There you go.
Thanks, man.
That was easy. Fire department donation. Carl, how much was it, and what's it for?
Um, well, it's a series of donations. Cindy, what?
Eleven, $1,100 total.
Yep.
Remember Luther Hasmer, John Toridi, Edward Grzinski, Zouski?
I need a motion to accept those donations, please.
Joe, Didi will make that motion?
Russ Fox, a second.
There's like 15 of them.
Okay, Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe, Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay. And then we have a request from the librarian to discuss hours with school going back, if I remember what the...
Yeah, they, I believe, and Michael can tell, they just wanted to give us the heads up on how they wanna make sure that they have the capability to accommodate students who will be going back to schools where, where they can put some capacity and schedule some time within their operating hours to accommodate the school kids in their time to, for library access. So they were just giving us the heads up on the actions that they took, so, you know, appears to be a very reasonable thing to put some time aside for giving support and access to the, the people from the schools to use the libraries.
Seems reasonable? So that she's gonna bring that to the Board of Trustees?
Yep, and of course, Michael's on here, so he knows exactly that we're talking about it.
Okay.
So it's not, we don't have to take any action.
Fantastic. Okay, on to old business, I believe. Um, do we want to go to, do we, it's tough to keep this in two places. All right, I'll bring this up. So I did attend the water commissioners' meeting last week, and they did vote to post and vote to notify the Board of Selectmen, um, pursuant to the Mass General law, that it's a joint appointment of the two boards if they notify us within one month of a vacancy, so I suggest we support their posting. Um, so, and then we schedule for, say, end of September, have a joint meeting to interview and appoint, uh, a water commissioner to fill the vacancy until the next election.
Right, and Cindy, Cindy will work on putting that, that, um, posting together.
Okay.
Okay.
Ad hoc cable advisory company, uh, committee.
I don't believe anybody's applied for it, but we did send a copy of the notice over to the finance committee's meeting this evening, because, um, they've had members of their board have been, um, helped out on that effort in the past, so we're trying to pursue some members there, and I'm not sure if anybody from the Economic Development Committee wants to be on it. So. Hi, Mike. So we, we are still looking for people, so if Dennis or Manon want to write about that, that's good, too.
Manon paled. But, okay. Green Energy, can we continue to table?
Yep.
Lions Key Club, Transfer Station Key, did they get anywhere with that as far as working it out, or we don't have to worry about it? They're gonna take care of it amongst themselves.
Mr. Chairman, they've worked that all out.
I'm glad to hear that, so we can strike that from our old business.
But, but, uh, why we're talking about that, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Um, the, uh, Police Department Lieutenant Landis and Animal Control, uh, Officer, uh, were working to consolidate, uh, that area down there of those sheds that we've acquired over the years, and they came up with the fact that they have donations for the, for the animal shelter that they would like to use, uh, to purchase a new, larger shed and clean up, continue the process of cleaning up that whole entire area down there. And they've worked in a agreement with, uh, a business to provide the shed and also to move the other sheds down to the transfer station. One would be used by the, uh, Lions, and one would be used by the DPW down at the transfer site. And I'm bringing this up because I'd like to make the suggestion to the board, since, you know, we kind of really started this ball rolling, uh, in getting Lions to help us get more of the, uh, returnables out of the recycling stream to help, uh, the town of Southwick. I'd like to know if the board would consider making a donation to help with the moving of the sheds, because it's an additional cost.
I have no objection. What, how much are you looking for, sir?
I was gonna work that out with Mr. Steinhardt and Lieutenant Landis to see exactly what that cost would be.
Yeah, it, it, you know, once, once this is done, it will be good, because those, those several sheds in front of the ACO really, uh, you know, they don't really look good, and with all the work that the fire, uh, Police Department's doing on that donated shed you gave them for all those bays, and then our, our service building down there that we do, uh, maintenance things, um, this is gonna be really good, and the new shed will be, will be going in a different location off of the right side of the animal facility going up the driveway. So it's actually gonna be in a better location, better situated, and, um, it's gonna help us clean up that area even more. Because, and I, by the way, I did a site visit, and it's further away from any wetlands, so that's good, too.
Joseph, any objection?
No.
Okay. Mr. Fox, see to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, thank you. Um, ah, that's on me. I gotta get with Kyle this week, so we'll keep that one open for one more week, please. Um, SEMA SPD reorganization of the auxiliary police function, I believe we finally have slayed that dragon. So I met with Charlie and the lieutenant and the chief, and I believe a deal has been brokered, and that's all set. Am I correct, Carl?
Um, yes, I think it's just a matter of making sure that we're, we're clear on what the wording needs to be on your, your votes, and I've asked, uh, Ben Coyle to provide that language.
Correct. There's, because the, uh, at the end of the day, the, the auxiliary is gonna be, when they're called up, they'll be activated by the chief, and training and so on will be handled by the Southwick Police Department, but under Mass General law, they're actually under civil defense as a matter of law. So we have to get clarification from the attorney to make sure we word all that correctly.
Right, and that will also, by extension, Mr. Chairman, dovetail into the, uh, the updated language for the Emergency Management Director position description that oversees these various entities, including races, insert, and SEMA.
Correct. But at the end of the day, Mr. Dunlap was wholly in agreement on the process of recruiting, process of interviewing, and putting on, uh, potential auxiliary police candidates, um, and the process outlined, uh, by the chief and the lieutenant, and all is well. Once we hear back from the attorney.
Right, and I believe that, at, at an upcoming meeting, you'll be seeing further, the, um, revisions by the lieutenant that will reflect the duties of reserve officers now, as well as a description of auxiliary police, and what their standards of training will be. So that you can expect at your next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this process so far?
So we should probably table that till we get the actual vote.
Correct. I'm just giving the update as to where we are with that. Speaking of peace in the Middle East, LMC has finally voted to accept, uh, a charter that I was charged with, uh, negotiating with them to edit their original, uh, document that they had set forth as kind of a mission statement. So they don't really have a charter, so now it is a mission statement, and this has been done and gone over, and they've accepted it. So I'm submitting it to the Board of Selectmen for your vote of ratification, please.
Where do I start? Joe DDI will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
And the understanding is with this board, uh...
Is there an understanding? Is there really an understanding?
There is a almost unanimous understanding on that board, short of pretty much one. But no, they really do have an understanding now that, that their board is an oversight board with no direct statutory authority, so that they're, they are to forward their concerns to the relevant board or commission, and if, after a reasonable amount of time, they are not satisfied with the outcome, they're to bring it back to this board, and not to, um, torture the other board or commission. That may also be a group of volunteers that are doing their best, to get, hopefully get to a satisfactory resolution to their concern. And they are also going to, as part of the overall discussions, kind of follow what we're doing and some other boards are doing with rotating leadership positions, so that others can be trained and up to date on what's going on procedurally with their board, um, and to take some of the, the overall responsibility off of people that have been shouldering, um, a lot of responsibility for a lot of years. AKA, we'll see.
Don't be in a boat with Doug Moglen on that water, that's all I'm gonna say.
If I get invited on the lake.
Yep.
Again, it's probably gonna be a homicide, right? Exactly. If I disappear on the lake, it was a homicide. No, they, I, in all honesty, I want to thank Deb Harath and Mike Dubay, um, and the representative from the liaison to the conservation. You know, I got together with a couple of those people, also talked to Dick Grenell's, we're all in agreement as to where we are going forward. And I think that they also realized, in fact, one of the members, I forget who said it, but he was so succinct, he goes, "You know, all these other boards hate us." And he goes, "There's a good reason for that." And I go, "I, I hate's a strong word, but, you know, you gotta put, give them, you know, give them feedback of what needs, what you see as an issue, and let them come back to you with what their feeling is. You can't ride roughshod over them or ride them until they just, you know, they do get upset and angry, so we'll see." But I, hopefully, this document will put that in perspective. You know, Dr. Mueller was also very helpful, so glad to see this finally concluded. Oy.
In closing, can we sing the "Sun Will Come Out Tomorrow" song?
I'm not a hundred percent positive of that, so.
Okay.
Um, Joe, do you have any other old business for today?
No, sir.
Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
How about new business? I'll give you a first crack at it.
Gotcha.
I just want to mention, uh, the, in terms of new business, the chairman and I, um, undertook a review of Maya grant opportunities, uh, for this year, and, uh, it had been a notice that I sent out to the various town departments, and we got two of them back. One of them was a, uh, a piece of equipment for an ambulance, but we had the dollars left over in an account for, uh, an ambulance purchase to get that, uh, camera for the back of eight.
Yeah, to be clear, it's not buying an ambulance, it's a camera for the existing ambulance.
Yeah, a twelve-hundred-dollar camera. To help, what, what you people have for safety equipment on your vehicles when you're backing up, we didn't have it on the older ambulance, so we have, we're gonna get that now. Um, and then the other thing that Doug and I did is we reviewed stuff, Randy had submitted something that was a, um, uh, one of the recommended items on the Maya list, which is a portable trench units. Uh, so when they're out doing some digging and excavating and doing basins and things of that nature. So that was, uh, that was approved by, uh, Doug and myself, and signed off and submitted to Maya, uh, so that we can try to capture, you know, uh, those grants, which can be as much as ten thousand dollars. So we're, uh, that was, you know, it's one of those things, every week, we try to submit a grant to, to get something to make the town safer. So, so that was my new business item. And, uh, I, I don't know, under old business, if any one of you have been driving by the, um, uh, fire station on Depot Street and been seeing the work that's going on there with the masons and the roofers, and, you know, they're working around each other physically in different parts of the building, and the clerk of the works is on site, and so everything's, uh, moving along, and we're having our weekly meetings on Tuesdays in the morning. So. So if there's any questions on that project, let me know, gentlemen.
Well, Carl, I have a question. You know, when I looked at the schedule, it looks like they're not gonna be done till November, uh, the first weekend, November on the roof, and probably the middle of November on the masonry.
Yep, their, their mason said about twelve weeks. Yep, that's exactly what they said last week, so it's, it's gonna be tight.
Do they have contingencies for weather?
Yeah, yeah, they'll, well, I can raise that issue, but they're gonna have to make it work, because they're under a schedule to do that within that timeframe. So, and you, you rest assured, Mr. Lawler is addressing those daily.
So we don't meet next week?
No, sir.
Any updates that we're doing to nine eleven at Wally Park, or?
Um, yeah, right, right now, um, the fire chief was, uh, you know, obviously, I think you're limited to fifty people for outdoor gatherings. So he had reached out today to, um, Tammy and Dennis, for Dennis to be able to film it, maybe live broadcast it to people, and, uh, also to Tammy, and, uh, so they're looking at trying to do, you know, use other media to allow people to view what's going on there, and then stay within the limitations that have been imposed upon us by the governor's order and the Board of Health. So those details are being worked out.
Okay.
And, and the parking rec had approved, uh, the request of the chief to use the pavilion.
Right.
For that event.
Right.
That was last Wednesday.
And the, uh, the electricity issue has been resolved, because we're, I just had people confirm that everything's been installed. So we presume it's energized and it's ready to go to support any entity that will be using the pavilion or surrounding land. And that, of course, gentlemen, was something that was voted on at the March twenty-fourth special town meeting in the high school parking lot.
Right.
Out of CPA funds.
Okay, so we're not, we're not meeting next week, we'll be meeting in two weeks, and we will, I plan to carry on the agenda as we promised, we'll start the, the process moving forward on the, uh, police chief position discussion on that agenda. And I also want to carry forward for discussion on that agenda, uh, in two weeks, is what, if any, action we want to take on the high-speed internet? If we want to let that be, we want to start going through the motions of looking at forming the, the utility to get the, to do the site survey, all of, and that, because it's budgetary, it would have to be in a twenty-twenty-two budgetary appropriation, if that's something that we're gonna consider to do and to undertake.
Doug, Doug, that, in terms of those, um, I know you, you've asked Randy to look into the pole issues and the ownership and all that.
I was gonna segue to that, because I think we also have Eversource coming in at that meeting as well, correct?
Right, uh, you do.
One of the asides that, um, I plan to ask, um, when they come in, is, w- w- part of the discussion we're gonna talk about is LED lighting, right, for the, the town-owned lights, and also converting some of the other lights to LED. But one of the interesting topics that came up in talking to, uh, one of the sergeants at the Police Department, with all that, uh, storm that we had and other accidents and so on and so forth, Verizon owns a ton of the poles in town, like the majority.
Correct, overwhelming percentage.
And interestingly enough, Verizon's not doing all that hot lately. Um, their wireline business is, you know, rapidly falling off. It'll be interesting to see what Verizon's plan is for those poles, and to see if there's some, if, you know, if Comcast has contingency for that, because they exist on those poles, too. So I want to ask them that, and that might factor into some of our decision-making process.
Well, if there are questions that are gonna be posted, then you should probably give them to me in, in advance, so we can give them to them.
I will absolutely do that. Is anything else before we close?
Well, when you were talking about the ad hoc, the, the high-speed internet committee, Doug?
Yep.
I mean, obviously, one of the things that we'll have to deal with is before you would think about, you know, asking people for large appropriations or buying poles and any of the other infrastructure.
I wasn't getting that far.
You have to actually do the earlier steps relating to the establishment of a municipal light plant under chapter one sixty-four.
But I didn't want to, we didn't want to go to and incur any additional expense before the Board of Selectmen decide if that's a direction that they want to go in, right? Because it starts costing big dollars after that, right? Even the establishment of a light plant, you gotta go through two town, you have to have the lawyers spend dozens of hours, you have to go to two town meetings, yada, yada, yada. It's, it's not a small undertaking.
Right. I've, I believe I gave you and the committee some of that information.
Correct, but there's no point in that, um, I got reached out by the secretary of that committee, and, you know, there's no point for them to meet right now, because they need direction from, from this board to see where to go from here. Um, any other business before the board, before we adjourn? Uh, I just have one note. Um, I don't know if anybody saw it and, and I know he wasn't an elected guy, but, um, and we usually, um, Big Al Supernaw passed away this past week, uh, also known as Poppy the Clown for, with the Shriners. And when you talked about the, uh, the masons working on the fire station, it made me think of masons and Shriners and it's how my brain works. So, um, you know, he was the owner of Suburban Chevy and was pretty active in town with the kids and stuff and he'll be missed. Um, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Joe DDI will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Uh, Doug Mogul, I.
Joe DDI.
Best box, I.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Doug.
Have a good evening.
You too.